Yes, we're going to do the pledge and all that before.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Well.
You have any?
Oh, we're ready, Karen.
Uh, yes, sir, I believe that we are, Justin. My apologies, it is part of Superior Court.
Yes, ma'am.
I will make, sir. Yes, sir, if you want, call the meeting to order, sir, and then.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Board of Commissioners meeting for May 5th, 2020. Just as a matter of information, make sure you turn off all your cell phones and so forth at this time. I would like to, at this time, recognize the, our Commissioner Adrian Worrell, we're getting ready to do his oath of office. And at this time, Mr. Honeycutt, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this?
No, we're just excited for Mr. Worrell and look forward to working with him.
Okay, we are privileged to have Justin Metshew, who's the Clerk of Superior Court, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for coming up, thank you for the family. Adrian's coming to be a part of this. This is, this is a great day for Wayne County and this Board of Commissioners. We're looking forward to moving this county forward in the days, months, and years to come. So, Mr. Metshew?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Worrell, if you'd like to hold the Bible for Mr. Worrell, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. And if you'll repeat after me. I, Adrian Worrell.
I, Adrian Worrell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
As a member of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Adrian Worrell.
I, Adrian Worrell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the Office of Wayne County Commissioner.
Execute the office and duties of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Worrell.
Yes. Mr. Worrell, Mr. Worrell, before you come up, would you mind introducing your family that's here, please? For us?
Yeah, with me I have my wife Selena, my daughter Roderica, and my brother Ralph Barnes.
Okay, thank y'all so much for coming for this honorable occasion. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, you're seated.
Justin, thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin. Okay. Today, our invocation, I'm sorry, we need to, we need to do the agenda.
We've got seven minutes to leave.
Yeah, we do. It's not nine yet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We can actually, because we changed the meeting time to 8:30, we can just move on.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to get more?
Yeah, we need to go back. You may or may not know.
We'll take care of everything at the discussion of the agenda, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Wayne A. Cott to have our invocation. Mr. A. Cott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's bow our heads. Dear heaven and father, thank you for today.
Thank you for your many blessings. This lead and guide us as this board to make the right decisions for the citizens of Wayne County. In this troubled times, we may not make the decisions that everyone thinks we're making the right decision. But we try to make the decisions that will suit and take care of the citizens of Wayne County. We're not perfect, no one is. Only Jesus Christ was the only perfect one. So if we do make mistakes, guide us through them and help us get through them. We also want to remember our medical personnel that's dealing with the virus, our doctors, our nurses, our caregivers, our caregivers in the rest homes and assisted living homes. Be with them, keep them safe. Be with the citizens that are more vulnerable for this disease. We pray that we have no one else in Wayne County to pass away and certainly hope that the cases start going down. Also be with our first responders, our paramedics, EMS, our law enforcement, our firefighters. Keep all of them safe, because when the calls come in, they're the first one on the scene. Be with our 911 telecommunicative call takers. They're the first ones that actually talks to anyone when they're in need of help. Also, we'd like, want to remember our men and women in uniform. We were a military community. Be with the ones that are deployed in all branches of service, keep them safe. All of this, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda's approval, minutes from our April 21st, 2020 meeting, if you've read those.
I move approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes for April 21st. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries. Before, before we go any further, I wanted to say that Commissioner Gurley is not able to join us today remotely. And we, we just need to keep Commissioner Gurley in our prayers as we have for a few months now and that his help might would get to the point that he can rejoin us at some point. Next is the discussion and adjustment of our agenda for today. Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and again, welcome Commissioner Worley, we appreciate you. Wanted to walk on a letter that we would possibly look at discussing and possible approval. It is a regional letter to be sent to Governor Cooper with respect to looking at opportunities for opening Eastern North Carolina. So, we would like to do that under new business, and I would read that letter at that time.
Okay. Any other additional changes or discussion on the agenda? Okay. Have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the agenda as presented, raise your right hand, please. Motion is unanimous, carries. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First on our agenda today is a special presentation, and number one is motion to adopt Resolution 202017, a resolution awarding service weapon to Sergeant Billy Rivenbark, and I'll turn that over to the Sheriff.
He's actually an employee in the program.
Okay. And, and also to Resolution 202018, resolution awarding service weapon to Detective Mike Cabler as well.
Morning, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This time, I will present two of our retiring deputies, their plaques and their service weapons. They both have been great officers for this county for a number of years, and we are so thankful for what they've done for the Sheriff's Office as well as Wayne County. At this time, I'll ask Lieutenant Michael Cabler to come forward, please. Morning, sir.
Morning, Sheriff.
Lieutenant, this time I'll present you a plaque from our county to Lieutenant Michael J. Cabler, Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of 25 years of dedicated service as a county employee, February 27, 1995, April 30, 2020. Congratulations, sir, on your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
You also are getting your 25-year pin at this time from our county.
Thank you.
As well as the Commissioners will be approving for you to have your badge and service weapon that you have carried for the protection of citizens of Wayne County.
Yes, sir.
For meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated in your career, your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you so much for all you've done for us.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Worrell.
I may make a motion to adopt Resolution 202018, a resolution awarding the service weapon to Detective Lieutenant Michael Cabler.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any, any discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And this time, I'll ask Sergeant Billy Rivenbark to come forward, please. Sergeant Rivenbark, presented to you from the County of Wayne, in appreciation of 10 years of service, dedicated service as a county employee from April 7, 2010, to May 1, 2020, County of Wayne of North Carolina, presents you this plaque. Thank you, sir. And in addition to that, your service weapon that you have carried on duty for the protection of our citizens, Sergeant Billy James Rivenbark, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career, your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We have a, we have a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to make the motion for award the service weapon to Sergeant Billy Rivenbark.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any, any comments or suggestions?
Just a question for the Sheriff.
Yeah.
Have you got good people behind you about sliding those jobs?
We are, we are very fortunate to have some coming along, but we are a young, a young department now, we really are. I'm going to miss these folks. They are coming back to help us part-time in some capacities, and I thank them for that.
I'm going to thank both of them, please, sir, thank you so much.
Sure, sure. You didn't get the memo that we can't take any retirees while the process is going?
They do actually have to lay out 30 days, so I hope after 30 days, we are over this thing to some degree. Thank you.
Any, any other comment? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to award the service weapon to Sergeant Billy Rivenbark. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimous, thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Good luck in your retirement, you'll be back in 30 days, right? Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Next on our agenda is unfinished business. Number one, motion to approve allowing Wayne County Public Schools to use 312,000 from existing sales and use tax funds to purchase 20.8 acres, which is the Evans Family Farm property, for the proposed Fremont Elementary School project contingent upon the Tier One Lottery Fund Grant Joint Application Approval. And if the Board of Commissioners remember at our last meeting, we did set a contingency on this approval for the school system to agree to a joint application for these lottery funds for this project. We did not say we had to receive the funds, but it does take a joint application to at least apply for these funds. So they did meet that part of their obligation, and this will just finalize the process for that purchase.
Okay. What's, what's the purpose of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. First to approve this motion to follow through based upon the reading by a chipper. About manage.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, are there any comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. A. Cott.
Just, everyone keep in mind, this, this is just a process that we've started. But with what this county is going through right now, this state's going through, this country's going through, we will make sure that the dollars will be spent as wisely as possible. Because we don't, we don't know what the future holds. We're going through something this country has never been through in our lifetime. It's been over 100 years since this country has been through a situation like this. We've been through some hard times, but we don't know what the outcome of this is going to be yet. And, you know, this is starting the process, but this is no guarantee, because the money's got to come from somewhere. And, and right now, the funds are not flowing. But I'm in favor of the motion, but we've, we've got to be careful how we're spending our money now. We can't keep dipping into fund balance for projects even though they're needed. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying this is not needed by any means, but we've got to be careful how we spend our money for a while. Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Now, if I, Mr. Honeycutt, just, just as a reminder, this, this, this is coming from the existing school funds, is that correct?
There is approximately 1.5, 1.6 million dollars left in their sales tax, existing funds. So this is where that's coming from. So this is their sales tax funds.
We do have to, I agree with Mr. Commissioner A. Cott, we need to be really conservative about how we spend, but in this particular case, the, we're not having to take any money out of our county Commissioners' fund balance for this. The school was taking care of this on their.
Yes, sir.
Money part.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just one more, let me clarify part of what I said. I understand that, that this is to purchase the land, but the land is no good if you don't have the money to put the building on it.
Right.
I'm, I'm think, you know, I'm more concerned about where the money going to come from, but the building on it than I am for purchasing the land.
I got.
Because it's got to come from somewhere.
Yes, yes. But on the other hand, if, if you don't have the land, you can't build a building.
Well, I know, you're backed into a corner, I understand that, but, but we've, we've got to be careful how we spend our money.
Yes, I agree with that.
And just because we're applying for the grant doesn't mean we, if we do receive it, that we would have to accept it at that time.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor, like Commissioner Marder, to approve that Wayne County Public Schools use 312,000 dollars for the purchase of property in Fremont. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Oh, yeah, motion carries unanimous, thank you. At this time, we have, I wanted to open up for public comments. We have a maximum of a 30-minute time limit on the total of our public comments time. Individuals speaking are limited to four minutes each. Do we, yes. The, the public comments are held, the people are in the adjoining jury room, and if we have someone to speak at this time, they will be ushered in by a deputy.
They've been checking right now, they've been a little busy.
We, we have no one for public comments. Okay, so our public comment time is ended. Okay, Mr. A. Cott, we have an appointment this morning?
Yes, sir, we do. We have three individuals, and they were, we made the recommendation at the last meeting and to vote on it for this meeting. First, we'd like to recommend Ms. Diane Smith to the Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, and this is a reapportment, and the pleasure to board.
Okay, we have, we have the Appointment Committee recommendation in front of us at this time. What's the purpose of the board at this appointment?
Was that in the form of a motion?
That was a motion, buddy.
Yes.
Are you in a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Mr. A. Cott, is, we're doing these one at a time, Mr. A. Cott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to accept Diane Smith on the Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisor Committee. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries. Mr. A. Cott?
Yes, this is a new appointment, Ms. Dolores Jones for the Community Child Facility Prevention Team, replacing Ms. Viola Figu- 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 Figurigo?
Figueroa.
Figueroa, okay. And that's also in the form of a motion from the Appointment Committee.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, is there any comments from Commissioners? All in favor of this appointment, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, last, this is also a reapportment, Ms. Martha Bryan, Commissioners Council for the Elderly Adults in Eastern Carolina Regional Aging Committee, and that is in the form of a motion, and this is reapportment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, so any discussion before the Commissioner? All in favor of the motion, Mr. A. Cott, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion is unanimous. Okay, is that, is that all you have today?
That's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. A. Cott.
Next is our consent agenda, and we went over the budget amendments and the request for application for Wayne Executive Jeff Port during our pre-agenda, and that's what we would ask for approval.
I should approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. I see any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, under new business, number one, is motion to approve National Nurses Week Proclamation, and I'll be glad to read that. Whereas Florence Nightingale, born in 1820, is known as the founder of modern nursing, and whereas Claire Barton, a nurse who earned the nickname Angel in the Battlefield during the Civil War, went on to create the American Red Cross in 1881, and whereas today, there are more than 3.9 million professional active RNs and licensed practical nurses in the United States, and whereas nursing is the nation's largest healthcare profession and one of the largest workforces in the United States, and whereas nearly 20% of all registered nurses in the United States hold a master's degree, and whereas there are over 1,600 registered and licensed practical nurses in North Carolina and over 1,600 in Wayne County, and whereas the first National Nurses Week in the United States was held October 11 through 16, 1954, in observance of the 100th anniversary of Florence Nightingale's mission to Crimea, and whereas National Nurses Week was designated by the White House and President Nixon in 1974, and has been recognized each year from May 6 to May 12, and whereas nurses are on the front line of a world pandemic and face unprecedented times, and whereas nurses are considered the most trustworthy of all professions in the United States. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 6 to May 12, 2020, as Nurses Week in Wayne County, and commence this observance to our citizen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Honeycutt, what's the purpose of the board?
Let's just move.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Worrell.
Would like to add just one additional whereas, my daughter's a nurse, no, I'm just joking.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. A. Cott.
Well, my daughter's not a nurse, but she does work at Wayne UNC, and they are, they're stretched out. They are, they're very concerned about what, what's going on right now in, in, all over the world. But they are, we take them for granted sometimes. Doctors are great, but the nurses is the one that actually that looks after you when you're in the hospital. I mean, they have to follow the doctor's orders, but, but nurses, they're special people. They go into a field that, that, excuse me, a lot of, a lot of people wouldn't go into. But, but really, nurses are great. So, I think it's very appropriate to, for this resolution, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Worrell.
I would like to add by thank yous to nurses, but specifically Wayne Memorial, call something else now, but about three years ago, I received an injury while I was at another doctor's office, but over in the afternoon, I had to have an emergency surgery. And when I woke up, I was in the hands of some very good, caring nurses. And not to get into the weeds too far, but I was out of, I was under the, I was, I was under the anesthesia. And when I woke up, there they were. And it's one specific nurse, and I was not in control of any of my body functions, and the comments that she made to me was so reassuring. She said, "Don't you worry about a thing, we're here to take care of you." Now, when you were in a situation that I was, to have that said to you, and you don't, you can't do a thing for yourself, I think it bears saying that about nurses. And, and when you look on television nowadays, and you see the stress that they're under, it's just beyond it. Thank God, I thank God he put some people here called nurses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? I would just like to add to that briefly, is that I look at nurses similar to medics in the Army. I was, I was a medic in the US Army, and my, my personal belief is that for nurses and medical specialists in the military, there's a special place in heaven for those people. Because they are dedicated, they are there not for the money, they're there from the heart. So having said that, we have a motion on the floor to approve the National Nurses Week Proclamation. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, who made the motion, I followed us.
Commissioner.
No, Mr. A. Cott did.
Mr. A. Cott, did you make the motion?
I think a couple of us said it at the same time. It doesn't matter.
You can, whichever way you want to put it.
I'll, I'll give it to Mr. A. Cott.
Okay. Okay.
Long as we get it done, that's what counts.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And number two is the letter we discussed as a walk-on. This would be a regional approach to look at sending a letter to the governor, asking him to look at possibilities of allowing Eastern North Carolina to look at setting their own timeframe with respect to opening. Part of this is that Eastern North Carolina has probably been hit a lot worse than other areas within our state because of recent hurricanes from Matthew to Florence to Dorian. And we're still trying to recover from that as well as trying to recover from the COVID as well. So, if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'd be glad to read this letter if you would like.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is to the Honorable Governor Roy Cooper. Dear Governor Cooper, this letter serves to represent the desire of a group of counties in central eastern North Carolina to reopen our local county economies to avoid any further damage effects caused by Executive Orders 121 and 135. We appreciate your leadership thus far related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Many of the decisions you have made saved lives and helped flatten the curve in North Carolina. Like you, we have had to make difficult decisions that have been challenging and have changed the lives drastically for many of our citizens. These orders have placed an extreme economic hardship on our local county economies. We no longer can sit idle as these orders cause vast economic despair and irreparable harm to our small businesses and citizens. As a region, we ask that you authorize local government control of decision-making in regards to a phased reopening approach to local county governments. We know that this is the best methodology to ensure that local data, metrics, and expertise are used in local decision-making. We request that you repeal Executive Order 135, better known as the Stay-at-Home Order and the subsequent phased reopening approach, and allow local county governments to individually determine the process and timing of any needed local restrictions. Eastern North Carolina has faced significant challenges over the last four years as a result of devastating hurricanes that has caused property, or excuse me, personal property loss and strain on our local economies. Hurricanes Matthew, Florence, and Dorian changed fundamentally how our local economies function. Each of our counties have seen small businesses fail, citizens lose their jobs, and families struggle to make ends meet. We continue to work in partnership with the state of North Carolina to rebuild our communities after these disasters. To this day, each of our counties is still challenged with finding normalcy in our local economies and the massive task of achieving long-term recovery. We have worked collaboratively with the state of North Carolina in a manner where local government input and citizen input was valued and helped develop the direction for which we can create a recovery plan. County governments have always been a partner in these discussions and served as the front line for local recovery initiatives. We are asking that the state of North Carolina and county governments follow the very same process as we begin the reopening of local county economies. County governments have worked in unison with the state of North Carolina, just like in times of natural disaster, to help flatten the curve and slow the spread of COVID-19. Counties have served on the front line as our public health departments take on the responsibility of testing, contact tracing, and caring for the sick during the pandemic. Our local data can begin to reopen, excuse me, our local data collection and ability to interpret such is the key to understanding the timing of when our local economies can begin to reopen in a safe manner. We all recognize that certain restrictions must remain in place to ensure that our locally, our local counties remain focused on slowing the transmission of COVID-19. We, however, feel that those restriction decisions should be made at the local county level. Local county governments would have to continue to seek consultation with our local hospitals, local health authorities, and state health experts to make educated decisions in regards to opening. As local elected leaders, we take those decisions seriously, and we would use all the tools and information available to protect our citizens and vulnerable populations and at the same time, restore the economic health of our counties. We come with one voice, to defend our local businesses, industries, and the overall economic well-being of our citizens. Our goal is simply to request local authority of decision-making and avoid being grouped in a broad-based statewide decision-making model. Our rural geography and low population density should not be lumped together with much larger urban counties that face very different challenges. We all agree that the most recent data clearly reflects that the curve in central eastern North Carolina has flattened and that our timing for reopening should be much sooner than other parts of North Carolina. Our region of North Carolina is unique, and our county is very diverse, but we all agree that the challenges facing the Triangle, Tri-Ann, or Charlotte regions of North Carolina are greatly different than those of central eastern North Carolina. By allowing for a local authority, you are allowing parts of North Carolina to move forward towards regaining losses in our economies and not hindering our long-term recovery efforts, not only from COVID-19, but from the devastating hurricanes which have already affected our region. We want Eastern North Carolina to prosper again, and to do so, we need your help. By empowering county governments with decision-making authority to make determinations locally to reopen our economies, we can bring back some normalcy back to our citizens. Additionally, we request that you communicate with the local county leaders in our region to further address our concerns. And at this point, as of last night, it has been approved by the Jones County Board of Commissioners, Craven County Board of Commissioners, Onslow, Carteret, and Beaufort, Pam Lecor, Lenore, and Hyde have this on their agendas for approval later this week.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hennecott. What's the preference of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President.
I move that the Wayne County Commissioners join seven other counties east of I-95, requesting that local county governments determine the process and timing of any needed local restrictions. And that is in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept as read. Is there any comments from any commissioners?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Acock.
As I had stated earlier, I'm all for the letter. I think it's appropriate. But personally, I don't think we need to hold our breath for the letter to make any difference. But, you know, maybe it will, but I just got, I don't know. I hate to see politics get into something like this, but it does sometimes. But I'm all for the letter, but let's just hope it does some good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Acock. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kamari.
I would like to just bring to the attention of the public that this board has already developed and sent a letter to the governor. Matter of fact, I think we worked on at least one draft before the final draft was put in place. And my understanding was that we wanted to strengthen the first draft, and that happened. And I would just like to ask for, just for public consumption, I think the governor is following the policy that the president put forth with respect to the trends, the flattening of the curve, and so forth and so on. As I understand it, that was it. The reason for that was so that the United States as a whole would be following a plan that everyone would be on the same page. We have watched with some dismay that there have been aggressive efforts to sway and or force governors in other states to change what the President of the United States put forth as a policy. It disturbs me that the President of the United States put forth such a policy and then appeared to encourage folk to contest that. That puts our first responders in a position of peril. And this board, without all of us making the comments, constantly worry and pray for the safety of our first responders. Now, there were people carrying AR-15s and some massive weapons. And no one said that they were loaded or unloaded, but the reason, they always said, "If you've got a gun, you need to have something in it." Got something in it, you may be deciding that you're going to use it. It disturbs me that we have moved to a point where aggressive demonstrations can cause what appears to be possible anarchy. The governor is enforcing the policy that the president, and not to put politics in this, but it is the Republican president and now Democratic governor is trying to follow that. Thank goodness they're on the same page in writing. My concern is, as I spoke before, is that there would be fringe groups out here that would use this as an excuse to take actions that would be detrimental to the safety of our public. I would like to ask this board and the board of Eastern North Carolina, what resources do we have? And what groups and committees do we have that could come together today, tomorrow, our project is in the very near term, that could come up with reasons that would supersede what the governor and those committees are doing in Raleigh? He has a group of people come up with him and give the reports, and Mr. Strayberry, who's well-known to a lot of us, make comments, and the nurses there. So, he's got a group of people that's working with him to try to keep us safe and to prepare to open the count, this, things back up when it's safe to do it. I understand with personal recognition that this is hurting businesses. I wish there was some magic formula that the businesses could open back up and it wouldn't do harm. But to continue to send letters, and in my opinion, to put pressure on the governors to open things up when the policy that the president sent down has not been accomplished yet, I wish we would take pause in the decisions that we are talking about making. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to save my comments for later.
Okay. I would like to say, and I'm going to save mine now, so I won't be walking on you.
Just as a matter of information, last Friday afternoon, Thomas Mark, who's the chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners, called me. And I called him back, and he said, "Mr. Mayo, I know that a lot of us counties east of I-95 and Eastern North Carolina have already written a letter to Governor Cooper. Do you think that Wayne County Board of Commissioners would be interested in joining us on a regional approach with a letter with, you know, six or eight counties, or however many we can get?" And in our discussion, we did talk about what, a lot of what's in the letter. One size does not fit all. I think the letter is exactly right. What fits, what fits Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro don't necessarily fit Eastern North Carolina. And when you have counties that have very few positive cases, very few, I'm talking about less than a half a dozen in a hospital, and it's been that way for the last three or four weeks, should we not use a single pattern for all counties? But to let each county have some input? We're not saying we're going to do anything. We're just asking the governor to take a look and see if there's certain areas like tourism in Carteret County, other places that may be able to open up. So, in doing that, I asked Chairman Mark to work through our county manager, and that's when he sent the emails out. And here's my thought, is that we are already regional on a lot of things that we do in our county. For instance, economic development, education, the Highway 70 Quarter Commission. Several of y'all have been on that and attended meetings. I think it's important that we, east of I-95, eastern North Carolina, send a single voice with all of us in it together as regional. And so, whatever the board's preference is, but those were my points in bringing it to the board to see what our commission board would want to do. Regional is the key. And if we don't work regionally, we probably won't get as far trying to work individually as Wayne County. So, that's all my comments. We do have a motion on the floor for this special regional letter that our county manager read. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed, right hand? Okay, motion carries. Any other, Mr. Hennecott?
That is all with respect to county manager's comments. Again, want to rec, you know, appreciate Mr. Orville for being here, and we've got a couple of meetings set up with him, and our department has the next couple of days. So, we're going to turn the, you know, he'll be drinking from a fire hose for the next couple of days, but we're excited about you being here. And anything you need, please let us know. We're here for you. Just want to let, everything's going well in emergency management. Really no update from our last update last week. So, things are still moving forward. We're just, again, waiting on what the governor may or may not say today and also what may or may not happen on Friday. So, other than that, that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, committee reports and comments. Mr. Kamari?
No additional comments except to say, gentlemen, we do ask for divine guidance and all that we are about on this board and the spirit of cooperation, although we may disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of it has already been said about our medical caregivers. They are under a lot of stress right now. Also, on that same note, people, if you're sick, they're, people are hesitant to go to the doctor now. They're scared to go to the doctor offices. But some of the calls that EMS has haven't answered now, some of the people they're picking up are sicker than what they normally should be. They're hesitant to go in, and they wait to, you know, they have no choice but to be picked up by EMS and carried to the hospital. So, you know, if you're sick, call your doctor's office. Take care of yourself, because, you know, we care. Our EMS personnel care. But they're seeing, they're seeing cases where they're picking up that the people are, if they'd have gone to a doctor or gone to the hospital earlier, they would not be in the shape that they're in. So, please, you know, as individuals, take care of yourself. Also, yesterday was National Firefighter Day. I'd like to thank all of the firefighters in the country, volunteers, paid, forestry service, fire departments, own military installations. fire departments own military installations, just thank all of them for what they do. Our small businesses, you know, we just talked about a letter that we certainly hope would do some good. We have some small businesses that are open on a limited capacity. Patronize them. The big box stores are doing fine, but they're small businesses that are open on, like I say, on a limited basis that are struggling. So do your homework and find which businesses are open, doing business, and patronize them. And also, I don't know whether the rest of the Board of Commissioners realizes or not, but Wayne Community College has got an ace in the hole right now. We've got two trustees on this board, so if we can just get two more votes, Mr. World, we can look at the Wayne Community College right now. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hennecott. Mr. World?
Yeah, I do. I would like to thank the board for selecting me to fill Mr. Bell's seat and looking forward to the opportunity, and I see that there is a lot to learn being a county commissioner, and I'm hoping that we all can work together to make this Wayne County a successful county and move forward in the future and do what's best for the citizens of Wayne County.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
I want to echo some of your comments about the letter. We're not trying to tell the governor what to do, we just want a voice in his decision-making. We can't allow our small businesses just to collapse, and a lot of them are doing that. They're very close to going out, and if we go many more weeks without some sort of reopening, and I know we can't open it wide, we're going to have to social distance and all that kind of thing, but small businesses, these people are smart. I needed something from a hardware store the other day, and I pulled in Lowe's and I did a quick 180 because they wanted a parking place in the hole of lot. And I went over to Delmas Hardware, and they had the social distancing there, and I got what I needed and got in and out, and she said, "Don't ever go anywhere else, come see me." Not that I would. But that's the point, and I think, you know, they're essential because they're selling hardware, but there are other places that could do the same kind of things. COVID-19 is deadly, but so is poverty. So I think we need to consider that, and thank God we've got small businesses in this county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Bell? I'm going to start mine off by reading this. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." This is the first words in the Bill of Rights, and I think what we all have forgotten is that we live in America, and America is a land of opportunity, but it's a land that gives us rights by our Constitution and the Bill of Rights. It allows us to make decisions rather than government making the decisions. What I've witnessed over the last few weeks is the government making all the decisions. Now, I want y'all to think about this for a moment. They literally have ordered all of us to go to our homes and stay there, but yet, at the same time, we're going to allow certain businesses to remain open. Folks, there's no common sense to what we're doing. We are destroying the small business owners and allowing the big businesses to thrive. They are making wicked profits at Walmart and at Lowe's, and everybody's going there. And just like Commissioner Page said, go to Lowe's and see what I'm speaking of. They're not walking around with masks, there's no social distancing, and as such, these people are going right back to their homes and with their families. The Bill of Rights in America was established of where we are to make decisions, again, not government. I hear constantly about our business owners here locally that are witnessing over a six to seven-week period of time the destruction of everything that they worked to build. Their security, they, their investment is totally being wiped out, and they are watching. One of them had a dress shop. The question is, why is it right for a citizen to be allowed to go to Walmart and buy a dress, but they can't walk into my store and buy a dress? See, there's no sensibility here. So we are abdicating our rights to government to decide who's going to be successful and who's not, who's going to lose their livelihoods and who's not, and I am just distraught over witnessing it. Our Attorney General of the United States has turned around and has basically lambasted what is going on in America, and I stand with him in his statements, that individual rights are not to be abandoned during times of crisis. You can't abandon what our nation was built on. This letter, if I had my saying, would be much, much stronger, but at least we are trying to send a message to the governor that we are not hurting, we are actually seeing and witnessing the destruction of small businesses in our county, in our region, in our state. So I'm just, I really am perplexed at what I'm seeing. Folks, use just a little common sense here. If you can go and limit the occupancy of Walmart and Lowe's, you could do the same thing for Delmas Hardware or the dress shop. I saw, and you all have seen probably, where hairdressers have turned around and installed between their booths privacy cloths that go between the booths where they're wearing masks and also the clients wearing masks. There are procedures that can be put in place that we can protect ourselves, but at the same time, continue to live in America in the land of the free. It is not the land of the free today, and I am very, very concerned about it. Now also, and I got into a conversation yesterday, and it ended up being a calm conversation, but on one hand, I was taking the position that we as individuals should have the right to stay home if you want to stay home, wear a mask if you want to, and you ought to have the right to do what you want to do for your health, but to turn around and tell me what I have to do infringes on my rights. I was standing there and this individual was there with a mask on, and I didn't have one on, and it was a cloth mask, and I, he turned around and asked me, "Why I didn't have a mask on?" And I said, "Well, I just, from what I'm reading, those masks really are not doing you any good." "What do you mean?" And I said, "Do you realize that the only masks that really are really helping you are those masks that are surgical masks that will prevent the virus from coming through the mask? Your cloth mask is really not fine enough, it's not designed for that." Well, he then turned around and stated, "Well, I'm wearing the mask to protect you, not me." And I said, "Really? Why do you say that?" And he said, "Well, just in case I have it." And I said, "Well, then that's my next point. People sitting in this room right now could have it, I could have it, because 98% of the people that were determined in testing at the, out here at the prison, 98% of them were asymptomatic. Means they had no, they had no symptoms. Well, if you don't have symptoms, how do you know whether or not you have it? Well, let's test everybody." Now they're talking about, "Let's test everybody." "Okay, everybody line up and we'll all test everybody." "Well, if you test them today, they could get it tomorrow." "Are we going to test every day? Are we going to have papers?" I was furious when I saw in Beaufort, North Carolina, them literally putting up a roadblock and blocked off all entrances to the town. "We're going to protect our citizens." It's ludicrous. You actually had policemen that were manning that station where they were asking for your papers when you drove in and wanted to go into town. Think about that a minute. Some of us lived and are very familiar with the time of the Nazis and the Soviet Union and so forth. That's not what I want for America. That's not what I want, and I know I've gone too far here. The last point I want to make is this. I'm still very concerned about the numbers that are showing up for Wayne County, and you really have to dig into it because all of those numbers, and I don't have them as of today, but when I had them, it appeared that 75% of the numbers were from the prison. Folks, those people are locked up. They don't walk amongst us. I hope they keep them locked up, but they are locked up, so they are contained within the fencing that's there. So that's not throwing any threat or any to our health because they are there. Those prison guards that have been tested have absolutely been sent home and they are in their 14 days of isolation. Then we turn around and look at nursing homes. Have you really looked and seen that the numbers from the nursing home, again, a closed environment, these individuals are not within our community, they are located within the confines of the nursing home. So when you analyze it, there's very few cases that are within the community or what they call community spread. So I would just say this, let's just take a deep breath, let's back up, let's examine what in the world we're facing, and it is not the end of the world, and we should not, in my opinion, we should not be giving up our personal freedoms and liberties over a pandemic, over those things that affect our health. I will hush. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things. Want to remind, in reference to what we've been discussing and of course, Commissioner Doherty, our small businesses. I've been heavily involved in Wayne County with a lot of small businesses being on the Wayne County Development Alliance, which is a great place to get help for small businesses. But Commissioner Doherty has a point. Most of the barber shops and hair salons in Wayne County, I've talked to at least two dozen, they do not qualify for unemployment or the PPP or the EIDL. Now, if you are familiar, the PPP is the program, the Payroll Protection Plan for small businesses, and of course, the EIDL is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. Well, a lot of small businesses have applied and have gotten this, these loans from the federal government in the stimulus money, but it's a lot of people, small businesses, mom and pop businesses, people that their wife and spouse are the only employees, you know, and they may not have their own salary, but they drew a little bit here and there, then they don't qualify. They don't qualify. So having said that, I think that's why we, a lot of us feel, that we should be on the same page with the big box stores whenever possible. Some great examples there, Commissioner Doherty. Lastly, I'd like to say, Commissioner World, again, I want to welcome you to our board, but I think it goes without saying, and I'm going to say it because I do believe it, I would say this, Commissioner Bell is looking down on us today, and he is pleased with you sitting on this board in this place. He is pleased. So welcome. Yeah, we all started seven, eight years ago, and we felt the same way you feel. Man, there's a lot to learn, but look, I'm telling you, with good common sense, what you have and love for people, this board is going to be better than ever. So thank you for coming on board.
Thank you.
Okay.
No closed session.
No closed session.
No closed session.
Okay. Any other, any other comments?
I should do a adjournment.
Okay. A motion on the floor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. We adjourn.